Third, 2024. Clerk Seeger, can you please take roll call?
Borninski. Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Seeger is both in attendance and speaking. Slavens.
Good evening.
And Snyderman.
I am here as well.
All in attendance.
Thank you. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved. Oh, Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the agenda as presented, adding item G nine, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to A.M. Higley for the purchase of prefabricated steel and steel erection for the public works storage facility expansion.
Or? Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from July ninth, 2024?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. All right, now we have public comments on agenda items only. Public comments on agenda items only. If you want to go to the podium and speak to agenda items, please do so for three minutes. Agenda items only. Okay, please go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Dan McCausen. I'm here representing the Plymouth Landing Community Condominium Association, located on the corner of Warren and Sheldon. So to request the, what is it, six minutes for the, represent the association?
Three minutes. That's three minutes across the board.
I thought if you represent a group, you get six minutes.
That was before. It's three minutes.
Okay, three minutes. It's going to be hard to get this into three minutes because they got comments on five, six, and seven. So five, representing the Plymouth Landing Association, we're at the corner of Warren and Sheldon. So this wetland has impacted us positively and negatively. We've seen a lot of wildlife that we've had to mitigate out of the community, mostly ground rodents. Can't say it's tied to that essentially, but never had it before. We're seeing a lot of it. In all these wetlands, which is great, we create wetland areas. Who maintains them? That's the problem. Our people mow all the way to the floodway, and we have to keep reverting that up the hill because the ground is wetter and wetter, and we had an incident where the lawn company rolled the machine. And since that time, they won't cut down the floodway anymore. So we got the subdivision complaining from the back. We've got our side, we're trying to maintain. Your ordinance guy's been involved in it before. Same thing with the trees. The trees you guys plant along Warren, your guy comes and cites us just last week for the trees not being maintained. But again, whose trees are they? So the association, we're really in a bad way for labor right now. We just got a recent, just to prune the bushes, in the association, $26,400 up from $3,500 annually because of the shortage of labor. So every time that there's more of this maintenance, these folks who live in these condominiums are generally single or retired, or they've been there since the beginning. So it's kind of affordable housing, but it's going to get unaffordable if we have to keep layering these costs on as a board. We haven't raised dues in ten years. We have immense amount of reserves, but that's because we all work at it really hard, and we can only stretch the dollar so much anymore. So the same thing with G six and seven. When you, when you get into those areas, those would be a perfect example where we could start some type of regional detention. That's what I would see. I've been making a point to speak to our neighbors to the south and our neighbors to the north in different communities. They all agree that regional flooding is a problem. Local flooding equals regional flooding, but they all pretty much say the same thing. It's a lack of maintenance. And they're all pointing towards a county. And I hate to keep getting up here and hammering the county, but somebody has to be accountable. If the county can't do the work, we have to take it on locally.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Okay, online, I have some people online. If you'd like to speak to an agenda item, please raise your hand electronically, and I will open the line for you. Okay, I don't see any online. Great, thank you. Next item is payment of bills.
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. All right, thank you. So next we have priority. Priority is our trash hauler as of July 29th, and since then, we have had a takeover of GFL by priority, which kind of threw some irons in the fire here, and we've had some issues over the past couple of weeks. So we asked them to come tonight to talk about, to answer some questions and talk about what the status of everything is. Just want to say, I mean, some of the things that we've heard online and during the meetings that we've had one-on-one with you is that you took over GFL trucks, and you had looked at them before the purchase, and then when you, after you kind of took over the routes, you found out that some of the trucks were not working, axles were missing, they were leaking, and some of them were undrivable. So you had said some of that and resources were some of the issues that you were seeing. I'm just trying to paraphrase for you a little bit. And so if you would just kind of like to give a little introduction about, you know, what has happened and where you are right now, then we can ask some questions, and please introduce yourselves.
Wonderful. My name is Dan Vinay. I'm Vice President of Municipal Sales for Priority. This is Paul Ruthenberg. He's a manager of Municipal Relations under my team. What you kind of paraphrased is correct, that, you know, when the, our executive team engaged in the acquisition, there was a process to evaluate all of the vehicles that occurred months ahead of the finalization and the public announcement, which we all found out roughly around the same time. And when we took these assets into our, under our control, what we realized were a great number that we had previously evaluated, knew that some normal incidental repairs were needed. The condition of the assets was not kept up. So that, you know, even from the 45, 60-day period that we reviewed them, it was worse in the condition that we took over. We also fought through a number of complexities of service where volumes were at a greater number. That was a big reason for our short capacity to complete some areas and routes, because if you look at the six weeks prior leading to July one, you know, service weren't being completed on the timeframe in the normal fashion that they should have been doing, and that caused what we would call as a logjam of volume accumulating at different houses. So it was all hands on deck from that point forward of July first to where we sit today. And as Paul and our team have worked diligently to get Canton Township to what we would be at now, a caught-up level, knowing that there's going to be some Saturday services for compost reclaim. When we start on the official start date, which is next week, you know, next week, Monday, we're going to have our new assets in the township that we committed to back in February. We're going to have our technology available on those new assets in Canton Township on that Monday. So what we will see next week, and your residents will see next week, is all services being performed on the day that they're supposed to be, all three waste streams being picked up on the day that they're supposed to be, because we knew back in February, this was our commitment when we were, you know, thankfully awarded the contract to start service. So, you know, the July transition kind of sped a few things up with our familiarity with your township and your residents, but knowing that we had this commitment to get things on, onboard to a normal, what we would say is the normal schedule when we took over.
Okay, thank you. Dave, I know we've been meeting daily, you know, for, since July first, and you mostly have been meeting with Dave and John Selmy and John Zalinas. Dave, did you want to add anything to that?
No. The important thing I'd like to, I'd also like to thank the DPW staff who stepped up and did some good work, and certainly the team in DPW, John Selmy leading them and the office staff, and also, well, actually throughout the township, handling the calls. I know Emma's in it back there. She took a lot of calls too, and your staff in the supervisor's office, and certainly MSD administration. So we got through that, but I am looking forward to next week in getting the new trucks and being on time and getting through the township in a, in what we're used to seeing in Canton Township, the service levels that our residents are expecting. Looking forward to that.
Thank you. John, did you want to add anything? I know right now we're getting daily reports and updates, and I know that the team is giving it, Joe's passing them onto the board, but I do appreciate, like you said, the employees. We did have the DPW teams go out and help with yard waste to catch up for, for three days, I think it was. And they, they did a great job. I know that, I know that Priority also brought some extra trucks out also to help, and we did, this week looks better than last week so far. So I know that you guys were also on Sunday, because I was driving around looking for trucks, and I did see them and kind of noting neighborhoods that were getting done. So we made sure that things were happening. But we just want to make sure, I just want, we just want to ask you a couple of questions. But just starting, so given the difficulty with the transition from GFL to Priority and all of the missed pickups, trucks shortage and communication failures, what is your plan, like we had spoken last week, what is your plan for a smooth transition next week?
The, the smooth transition next week is a lot of the planning that's already been occurring from February onward, from when, the last time we were in front of this group, and having the assets ordered and now, now delivered, being equipped and ready to go for next week with the, what we would call as a normal Priority launch, which is with the dedicated LDC, which is a logistic driver coordinator, watching the services as they're occurring in the township, seeing the streets as they're being completed, making sure they're being passed on both ways for completion of service of a street, right? The geo systems that we don't have on the GFL trucks will have on the new, the assets that will start next week. You know, we knew back in February when we committed to this, that the, where the township needed to see the best improvements was to make sure that things were completed, and then if there were spot checks for it, and that the trucks that were previously servicing the township or servicing at the time didn't have the technology that we had in our normal repertoire. And what with, with Monday, having all of that checked, balanced, and ready to go, and our operations commitment to getting them the focus, the township, I mean, the focus that you deserve, will allow us to do so. So it's, it's been a, you know, normal transition where our checks and balances and having our governance checks every month to make sure that everything is in line. All of the carts should be arriving, if they have not arrived, by the later part of this week, to your residents outside of the few that we know are the, the smaller cans, and then we have a plan for those in August to be delivered out to. That's, you know, we're on pace, on schedule, ahead of schedule in a lot of cases for this transition to make it smooth on Monday.
So then what should the residents expect from Priority when they need to communicate missed pickups, you know, or broken or missing parts, or who is Priority expecting, you know, response time to residents? Because I know that you aren't open on Saturday and Sunday, and I think that was one of the first week's issues, is that, I mean, our, you know, call staff, all of our staff were picking up calls everywhere, and we couldn't get ahold of anybody on the weekend when we, and if somebody misses their pickups on Friday, by Monday, they're hot if we can't get through to, through to you. So what, what can the residents expect, and who should they call?
What, what we'll also see with, you know, talking to that is if we're completing the services, we will have obviously a decreased number in those calls or requests. But with the capabilities that we have with the traditional launch, the residents will have access through our website to contact us directly, which will streamline communication to the LDC. The LDC's emails are able to be responded to in a timely fashion in what we would call as off-service hours. We also recognize that there's been issues with our phone systems in the, in the transition with the GFL coming onboard. We've since implemented a new phone system that allows residents to leave a message in off-hours so that they can get to us and we can address it immediately on Monday for what would have happened on Friday. But really, the, the core of the issue is, are we completing the services? If we're completing the services, those calls generally don't have to come into our office. The residents are not needing to call us to let us know. So the technology background, the GPS trackers, the ability to see what's happening live, that we don't have the access or ability to now, will affect and positively affect the, the residents on that Friday service.
Can you describe how, what the residents will see starting July 29th? What kind of trucks will they see? How should they place their garbage three feet away, correct?
Yeah, they'll see our new yellow trucks with the unique fun sayings that are on the sides. You'll see mostly the same-ish crews with a few, you know, a few pieces upgraded and moved around shuffled for effective service. Corrado trucks require a different training model than other trucks, so that's a part of it, that if a driver's not familiar with driving that style of vehicle, we don't want them to drive that style until they're prepared and trained on it properly. The carts will be in service. We're hoping that residents are not using them now, but I'm sure that there are a number of them. We want those to remain out of service until next week if, if they can. So next week, the trash carts and the recycling carts at the curb, not in the street, three feet apart, so allow us to service them and replace them not in the roadway. Leave cars parked in driveways or elsewhere, not blocking, just like we do for mail. We don't block mailboxes. We hope that they don't block the trash and recycling carts. But you'll see an automated style of service that they have not seen, which is more professional, more clean, more, what I always say is a 21st century style, as opposed to the more manual, ground on the tra, or trash on the ground style handpicking service that they've recently been, been experiencing.
Board questions, comments?
Thank you very much for coming to our meeting tonight. First, I want to start by saying to our DPW and municipal services staff, thank you so much for helping us through this transition. I know it has not been easy for you, and as was mentioned, Emma, you are a saint. Thank you so much. So I just have a couple of questions. Are you currently caught up? Is everything that was supposed to be picked up until this evening, has it been picked up?
Currently, as we are right now, we're trying to complete the recycling portion of the routes. That, we believe we have a plan of attack going forward to get those up to current, trash is current though.
Because my concern is if you aren't caught up this week, it's going to delay things next week, and I don't want to see that happen, especially with the transition to the new carts.
Of course. That goes without saying. We need to come out of Saturday completely clean in Canton Township.
Okay.
That's very, very important.
I would also say, in terms of residents being able to have access to Priority and report issues, I think, you know, reporting online, the website, it isn't always accessible to everyone. Everyone does not have access to email or know how, especially if you're elderly, if you have a disability. I think it's helpful if people are able to call, but if they do call, what is your turnaround time in getting a response to them?
Are you, I want to make sure I answer this correctly. So you're saying, let's, like today, somebody were to call after hours and get a response, you're saying tomorrow?
Yeah, Matt, yeah.
Yeah. So the, the first plan on our platform for the logistic driver coordinators is to answer and address answers, questions that have come in, in that time period from end of day, the current to the following. So their first action items are actions from when they came in. They work in that system of when it was received is the best way to work through it. So responses should come first thing the following morning with a plan sent to the territory managers and lead drivers to coordinate the recovery actions in the field.
So someone could expect, if it's during the week, a response back in like 24 hours?
Of course, yes.
Okay. What about on the weekend?
The, the weekend is a little bit more difficult, as I mentioned before. I mean, it's Saturdays and Sundays we don't normally run, and we're supposed to be on Monday through Friday. But as the LDC, as we've entered this technology age where things are on phones and computers and laptops that we do take home, there is that capability to track and respond to things over the weekend, but primarily it would be a first thing Monday morning response and recovery action, because that's when the trucks would be in the township.
Would it be possible while we're under this period of transition and in this period of you catching up, to be able to be accessible on the weekends and return residents' concerns on the weekend?
I can share the feedback with our office, and I don't want to overcommit to something that isn't normal or, not normal, but isn't standard practice, and provide some updates to John, the team, to share with you all.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the side? Over here.
Hi. Thank you for coming tonight, and I want to thank MSD and Department of Public Works, and Emma, and all the staff that have been answering calls. I know that I was in the clerk's office yesterday, and a call came in about trash pickup, about a missed pickup. So first of all, I'm wondering, so next week is the official transition, and you said that all the services that are supposed to be done on their assigned day will be done on their assigned day. So does that include the yard waste pickup?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so we need to make sure we get that word out. Then I, I guess I'm concerned because it doesn't seem like, first of all, what Trustee Foster was asking about, you know, the weekends, I think we need a better way to make sure that, that those missed pickups are done timely. I know you said that there won't, probably won't be any because of your technology and all of that. That being said, it's hard, it's really kind of hard to trust right now, because we had reports of, we had people emailing and saying that their garbage hadn't been picked up for, or recycling actually, hadn't been picked up for several weeks. And then we were told that Priority had picked it up, and the supervisor and I went out driving around Canton and recorded, you know, where areas were that needed pickups, and we went to where the recycling had been reported not picked up, and it was actually not picked up after we were told that you were caught up there. So how are we going to make sure that, you know, this doesn't happen again, and that when you aren't caught up, that we get a true report?
So with that, one, I want to find out that area, if you, if it's still an issue, so we can get that collected, but the-
I, I believe it was collected, but it hadn't been collected for at least two weeks, possibly more. And we had emails from people in that neighborhood. It was the whole neighborhood. It was not just an individual. And the supervisor even like filled out the missed pickup form for this person. And I know that MSD had also sent in a missed pickup report on it, or possibly called. But, you know, we went there on Sunday, and it wasn't picked up.
So with the trucks that we took in, there was also a component that should have come over, which was their previous GPS system. It's a GeoTab. It's kind of an antiquated technology that's, that was used by their trucks. We had a license agreement for 90-plus days to allow us access to track trucks. But again, we talked a little bit about some of the, I'll call it tomfoolery of the handoff of the assets. That was not provided to us. So we were, with a number of trucks unable to track their whereabouts. So a lot of it was the human element of service, that we had to trust that as they were shared, things were done. When we walk into Monday with the cameras and the GPS system that's on the camera system, there's no more requirement or need for that. We'll be able to pull recorded video from those trucks to confirm that it was. So if a missed stop or an area that needs to be addressed is asked or requested, we share that information to the LDC, that logistic driver coordinator I spoke to earlier, and they can pull video and show that it was completed, or take a snapshot of the completion of that service. So I don't say that anything was done maliciously. I think a lot of it was just accidental. They believed truthfully that they returned that to the area. I don't think anybody has any ill intent. But when you come to recovering multiple streets, and they're trying to remember multiple streets or an area that they did get to, I think that there's that human area of a mistake. But this technology that we have will allow us to prove that it was complete, not just through word of mouth, but actual physical evidence with a video or a camera photo.
Okay, that's all well and good, but, you know, when there's been reports of a missed pickup, then why doesn't anything happen?
I, I-
And I, I don't think it was malicious either, I'll tell you. I mean, the, the whole neighborhood didn't have the recycling pickup for many weeks, and I don't believe it was malicious. I think it was probably, like you said, human error. It's a very southwest portion of the township, and I, I just think it was forgotten. But there were reports, you know, the supervisor sent in a missed report for it after we found out about it, and I believe that MSD also called or, or sent in a report too. So that's an issue if there's a report made and then nothing is done.
I, I agree, and that's where I, I look to the future and the positives of this technology allowing us to confirm that they were done. I can't speak to the instance that you're, you know, illustrating. I can just say that in the 43 communities that, you know, Priority organically gained prior to the GFL acquisition, we have them camered. We have these capabilities to double check and spot check and confirm that things were completed. And as we roll into Monday with the capability to do that, I have full trust in our team that we'll have the ability to make sure. And like I said, the GPS system allows the LDC who's dedicated to Canton Township, every day can confirm that they did in fact return to the spot in which they needed to get to. Every street was double passed one way, the other way, and make sure that the entire street, not every nook and cranny of every, of every community, was addressed, serviced, and completed. So I, I'm apologetic because I know that your team, the DPW, MSD, all the, the staff of-
And Emma.
And Emma, I don't want to forget Emma, you know, received all of these calls in the clerk's office and everybody else. I understand this, this was clunky in the, in the handoff. It was not for any other reason than outside of some controls that we could, you know, fix. But we are committed next week and this week to get it clean this week and next week run on that normal schedule with what we have as a normal operating procedure for your collection, so that these cases that you're illustrating do not happen again.
So since you have the ability to confirm that the routes were done each day, will you do that, or will you only do that if there's a missed pickup? Like, at the end of the day, will there be a confirmation that everything is done?
Yeah, I mean, Paul can, can relay information across to John and the others that would want to receive it. But the, and, and we can show the map of, of service as it's routed. So every individual, I mean, we can break it down as much as you want. I mean, I want to gain, our team wants to gain your trust and understanding that, you know, going forward, the expectation is every route, every corner is touched. So for a period of time, while we get through the, the newness of Priority service, we can commit to sharing information on a daily to John and this team to distribute out that it shows on a route, all the map, every, every street was, was serviced. And that's, again, the capabilities with the new trucks that'll be servicing on Monday that we can, can, can commit to.
Okay, thank you.
Even?
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming tonight. I, I will say that-
I will say that in February, when we made the decision to go with you guys for our future collection services, we were very excited. And I will say we still are. At least I am, I can let the others speak for themselves. And we were looking forward to July 29th being a transition for our community. And we are still hopeful that that will be seen as such a transition. But if you had asked me if I wanted you to take over the GFL service a month before as it was and start delivering on that service before you started with using your new technology, personally, I would have said, no freaking way. And I understand that we're just one community. I mean, I know you, all your communities are important and I do, you know, want to feel important, that we're important. But, and so you had a greater plan. I mean, obviously you have the opportunity to take over other communities that maybe weren't up for bid at the time. And I can understand you wanting to do that. I just kind of wish there was a way that you could have not done it here and just said, okay, or operated more as GFL somehow, not Priority. Because now it doesn't look like a great transition, starting July 29th for our community. And we all said in February, you know, when we were discussing this at our study session, that there can be hiccups and when we transition to a new service. But I feel like unfortunately, you've now used up some of that goodwill that you would have had starting July 29th if things didn't go perfectly day one, like you said, with the new trucks and new technology. So I feel that's unfortunate. I can't, we can't go back, we can't go back in time and change it or anything. I'm hoping that the community will see that July 29th truly is the date that we're transitioning to a new service. I just really didn't want your name to be attached to what was here before. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on that before I ask a couple other questions.
Yeah, I agree with the sentiment because I think as, you know, June 28th, when we stopped our core level of service and three days later started the new, you know, level of service, it came with a number of complexities as we just talked about briefly. But, you know, as we look at this, you know, next week, Monday, transition, I put that in quotes, is it allowed us, I like to look at some positives. I know that there's a lot of negatives, but I like to say that there was a lot of learning that was done in these 28 days that will help us for that 29th to avoid some of what would have been experienced at that point, learning curves then, right? So we've seen the nooks and crannies that are more difficult live. We've seen some of the complexities of service in the township live as opposed to shadow routing behind a service provider that was struggling to the finish line per se. So the positive is that now that we've run for, you know, it'll be three, four weeks leading into Monday, we'll have worked out a lot of what we have learned, what would have learned on those first 30 days of the new contract period. So, you know, that's where I can say is it allowed us an opportunity to learn in a chaotic environment for what we'll see as a more smooth and controlled environment.
Okay, I can appreciate that. Thank you. So on Monday, we have, I think you said it was 16 new trucks. Are those solely going to be for trash pickup?
Trash, recycle and compost.
So they will be doing the recycling as well? We're not relying on old trucks for the recycling?
No, all of the, all of the services by Canton Township trucks or in Canton Township will be with Priority Yellow New Trucks.
New trucks and, okay.
And new model year, you know, they may be old, but they're new trucks.
And they will all have the cameras and the new technology that the control center will be monitoring and things like that? Okay, well, I wish you good luck on Monday.
I'd like to thank everybody, including Emma. One thing that I'd like to say is all of us at Priority Waste understand that we have a ways to go to earn your trust and the public's trust. As I am here tonight, I am extremely confident that that is the only thing that will happen once we get around to picking it up the Priority Way. So my goal personally is to have the township not think about garbage on a daily basis, the residents not to think about garbage on a daily basis. This is the goal. The goal is to regain trust in this body and your residents. Thank you.
Hi, I just want to thank you for being here too. And also to thank Municipal Services and DPW and all of the staff. I know both the clerk's office and my office were bombarded daily and having to fill out forms. It's tax season for me, so we are crazy busy. And I know it's election season for the clerks, so we, you know, we're here to serve the residents, but that, this was a huge hurdle for everybody, so I'm looking forward to Monday too. Now, are the 16 trucks going to be enough?
Yes, that's what should have been running in the township with the previous service provider and what we feel is a normal balance for comparison to other communities. For Sterling Heights of, you know, 40,000 homes, that's the amount that they're running on a day-to-day basis and they're wrapping up services in and around 4:30 to 5:30 each night. So we believe that 16 is the, is truthfully probably more, but like we said, as Paul illustrated, we want to regain trust. We'd rather start heavy than light because if you start light, you run into the complexities. New trucks tend to have a break-in period where we, you know, work through the kinks of a new truck. But what we want is to have more on the street than what was really required and scale back as necessary as long as the service is being completed timely every day.
Okay, okay. And then the only other thing I'm going to bring up, what trustee Foster brought up, is some residents don't have access to the internet. And so I hope you have a way for them to call in those issues so that they're not calling staff to fill the forms out.
Yeah, our phones are allowed to record like a message, just like our house and cell phones. So residents can leave a message. What that does is dictates to an email to the Canton Township LDC. And again, that's their first action items when they've opened their email on Monday morning to get anything that may have come in throughout the weekend. For comparison, Sterling Heights, 41,000 or so homes, on a weekly basis, we're getting 220 or less calls and that's a very small percentage. And that's a total call volume. That's 220 across the board. That could be for service-related issues, questions to service, updates, how do I get this? Where do I get that? Because they went through a transition very similar to what Canton Township residents are going through from a manual, what I would call is hand pickup, to an automated cart only. So they had a grace of transition like you did. And the first week, we saw 500 to 600 calls and now we're getting less than 200. And like I said, not all 200 are service-related. Some of them are general questions about service, what's the holiday schedule? How do I get an extra car, things like that? So the comparison is that what we want is the call volumes to drive down because of performance on the street is actually efficient and occurring.
Okay, thank you.
Anna?
So I am, so how are you picking up the yard waste? Is that, that's not like, you know, that's not automated, right? So how do you do that? I'm just curious about.
That'll be the one manual component that we'll have for service with a rear-load truck, like it is being done now. So you'll have the laborer on the back servicing the yard waste as well as a bulk truck. So I want to talk to that as well. So with bulk and the items that are outside of a cart for your weekly collection, there's a manual truck that will follow. So if, and I hope residents hear this, that if they walk out one day and their trash cart is serviced, but a chair or a couch or a mattress is sitting outside of that cart, it has not been missed, it is serviced by a different truck. So again, these are going to be some of the calls that you may receive and this is similar to Sterling Heights. It's run and serviced by that manual truck because those big, large, bulky items cannot be serviced by an automated vehicle. Think of it this way, you lift something over your head, you can hold it, but if you drop it, where's it going to land? On your face. A truck with a front hopper is doing the same thing. And if a large item falls down and misses the hopper, it could fall into the windshield or into an employee or somewhere else. So the manual truck circles back throughout the streets and grabs the bulk items. The automated trash truck will mark when bulk is out at the address so that the bulk truck is working efficiently. So if the trash automated truck is servicing a street and they notice one or two bulk items, they pin it for the bulk truck to run back and pick up. So if your resident call you at 9:00 AM and say, I was missed for trash, they grabbed my cart but didn't get my couch, it's very likely it's just on its way, we haven't quite gotten there yet.
If I could also point out, and that's a great point, what residents are used to is seeing three different services, okay? With Priority Waste, when we run our Priority Way, they actually see four because the bulk is a separate service. So you'll see a lot of people that will say, a lot of residents that get concerned, especially after what they've been through, that this has not been collected when in actuality, it's that fourth collection truck. They see all three items gone, but the bulk's still there, they can get worried. But we do know where it is and we are coming to get it on the same day.
Okay, so when the phone calls, you have a phone line, right? So nobody, nobody on the other side picks up the phone, it just goes to a message? I'm just curious about how that works. You're saying that it gets basically, it's a voicemail and it gets transcribed into an email? I understand that, but like there's nobody actually that picks up a phone for on your side?
That's only after hours.
Okay.
The live hours, there's live individuals in our corporate office that answer phones and handle requests or, you know, requests for information or issues for the public. We've transitioned to a new phone system and that was due to the identification of some issues with our phone system at the July 1 transition. That is now at a much better, much healthier state. So the phone system does have an AI component on the backside. So if a resident calls from the same phone number and needs something from your township, what it will do is at, in a course of a period, recognize that phone number and transfer it immediately to the proper person in our office, the LDC, that's watching the service. So when the LDC is also watching the routes and is talking to a resident, they can give live feedback to that resident of, just for the example we just talked about, your trash truck picked up my cart, but not my bulk item. They can say or show to the resident, actually, we're three streets away. Or yep, it's been identified, we're on our way, kind of a thing, which will minimize what I would say is elevation of issue. You know, the resident's emotion of not getting it completed. At the end of the day, they want to have their curbs and street sites cleaned. So they'll be able to get that live feedback immediately on the phone with that LDC.
Okay, so I just have a comment after this is that, you know, you knew that this was just, this is the only community that you picked up from GFL that you didn't have a contract with, is that correct? Like recently, that you have picked up all these 17 or 18 communities with new GFL contracts? Ours is the only community that signed up a new contract with you?
Well, Lincoln Park signed up with us last night.
But before that, like I'm just saying that-
Yeah, as you asked, correct.
Yeah, so I, my only comment was because we chose you, right? It was, you didn't pick up, we didn't have this, we didn't, this was not handed off to you by GFL. We chose you, this community chose you and we were hoping that, and that's what, exactly what I said to, when I went last Monday, not this Monday, but the last Monday at DPW for a meeting, that's what I told your root supervisor, I don't remember his name, Mitch, Mike?
Nick Allen.
Nick, Nick, sorry, yeah. So I told him the same thing, that, you know, we chose you. So we were hoping that when you serviced our community, you would have serviced it with a higher, you know, a better, I mean, we were expecting better. So I, that's my comment for you. And I really, as Stephen said, you have lost our goodwill in the community quite a bit with what happened in the last two weeks and really hoping that, I don't want on Saturday morning on the third or the fourth, that is like, you know, there's something lying and you are still catching up. That would be like you have had two weeks to catch up and really hoping that doesn't happen because you don't work on the weekends. Because that is going to be, you know, you are going to, the residents are not going to be happy, especially the Fridays. Because, you know, this has been an ongoing issue, the Thursdays and Friday, people, the trash sometimes gets delayed because of holidays and things like that. What do you do for a holiday schedule?
Holiday schedule is run the same way as it across the board as a standard that if the holiday falls on your collection day, yours and the following are shifted back one day. So if you're, let's just say, Labor Day will be the first one that we run into. That's a Monday, so the entire week shifts back one day, pushing Friday to Saturday.
So it'll be open on Saturday and you'll be the ones? Okay, all right, thank you.
Never thought that 45 minutes of talking about trash pickup could be so exhilarating. I have no questions. I'll just indicate that I'm looking forward to the transition to automated service. And I'm more interested in ensuring that that long-term transition is successful than I am over evaluating or discussing the last couple of weeks. I was at the Association of Wayne County Clerks meeting the same week that we were having missed pickups for recycling and yard waste. And a lot, you know, there's 43 communities in Wayne County, you service many of them. And so what I was hearing from most of the clerks and other communities were similar stories, right? And we talked about the mathematic reasons why that exists, right? But there was a community there who does receive automated service from Priority and was a Priority client prior to this transition. And hearing that clerk talk about how amazing the service is, how much they love it, how a resident will call in claiming to have a missed pickup and they pull the photo up and says, oh, 9:30, here's your front door, no trash out. Are you sure you put that out at 8 o'clock? Do you think maybe you put it out at 9:30? Yeah, sorry. That level of sophistication is excellent and I look forward to that. So I would just say what we are experiencing now is temporary. I think as we transition to the automated service for trash pickup, consistent with recycling, I just want to make sure that we make that transition and we make it well so that we don't have to talk about or think about recycling or trash or yard waste and have a 48-minute discussion about it at the next board meeting or future board meetings. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do want to say also that the same kind of thing that, what you had said, that we don't have to think about it because it's just going to happen expertly. Thank you.
Or Emma.
Important for Emma and our residents and everything, comments at the end. And then did you want to say anything else?
Thank you, Supervisor.
Okay, Dan, Mr., no, we will have some things at the end, we'll have comments at the end. No, we can have comments at the end. No, we are not done, sir. Mr. McCoslin, comments at the end.
I would just like to thank the board. I would thank, I would like to thank the residents of Canton Township and just let you know that we are looking forward to beginning Monday, the Priority Way. Thank you.
Okay, I also know, I don't know, Dave, if you wanted to say anything to wrap up or John sell me? I also know that in seeing the drivers, some of it was 97 degrees, you know, in the beginning. And the drivers, I noticed they were parked at the gas station. So they worked very hard and, you know, to catch up. So I do want to say that they were, I don't think there were any ill will towards the drivers and the staff, but I do say that I did hear stories of people giving them water and things like that. So people did feel bad for them, so.
Thank you for recognizing that. That's greatly appreciated by our labor force.
They really did. But we will have public comment at the end and of course, seeing what's going to come. But obviously you can go speak in the hall if you liked anyone. But thank you for coming, I appreciate it. And we have a short agenda. So then if you would like to, our next agenda.
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider increasing one blanket purchase order- Item C1, consider increasing one blanket purchase order for municipal services. C2, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to remove and replace the second floor carpeting at the summit on the park. Item C3, request approval of Cisco VOI P licensing and support renewal. And item C4, consider approving the annual subscription renewal of Graykey Essentials.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Madam Supervisor, I move to amend the agenda. Taking item G7, consider approval of donation agreement to acquire vacant land on Morton Taylor and authorize the township supervisor to sign all documents necessary to complete acquisition as the first item on the agenda. And then moving item G6, consideration of resolution establishing Jeschwidokan Nature Area with Preservation Status under Section 50-3 of the Canton Code of Ordinances titled Open Spaces and Nature Area Preservation to just after that first item.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. So consider approval of donation agreement to acquire vacant land on Morton Taylor and authorize the supervisor to sign all documents necessary to complete acquisition.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the donation agreement for the acquisition of 27 acres of vacant land located on Morton Taylor in Canton Township as described in the donation agreement and to authorize the township supervisor to sign all documents necessary to complete the acquisition.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Board has an opportunity to acquire 27 acres of land from Marketplace of America III LLC Marketplace located on Morton Taylor via a donation agreement. Marketplace would like to donate the property to the township to preserve its wetlands, woodlands, open space and/or parkland for the benefit of Canton residents. Marketplace reached out to the township in May of 2024 offering to donate 27 acres of land on Morton Taylor to the township for the benefit of residents. After discussing the donation officer with township leadership, we instructed Foster Swift to begin working with Marketplace's legal representation to generate a donation agreement that would convey the vacant land to the township. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Clerk Seeger, do you want to add anything? I know that you would help with bringing them forward.
I know that Marketplace of America is here to talk if...
Great, so if you want to come to the podium and introduce yourself and talk about it, thank you.
I'd like to thank the board to give me this opportunity to speak. Anthony Noble, 3423 North Corey Creek, White Lake, Michigan. We've owned this property for over 18 years and we've come to a pivotal point where I've had many discussions earlier this year at a conference with Clerk Seacrest about the beautiful part of our property in the back. If you have a chance, I invite anybody, if you haven't, to walk that property. The Rouge River goes through the property, there's a lot of trailheads. After discussing it with our partners, we felt it was a great buy-in for us to show our support and commitment to Canton Township, to the residents. This will alleviate any development on that property in the back, which will be beneficial to the residents that are adjacent to that property. We're really excited. We did have an appraisal, we worked with the deputy supervisor, supervisor and also the clerk. We provided appraisals, environmental to show our commitment. The land was appraised a little over 1.6 million and we're excited about keeping the green space because a lot of times developers come into a township, I know this firsthand because I sit on a board, and, you know, they take as much as they possibly can. We're excited about the development with Redwood behind our 15 acres of commercial and we're just looking to create synergy for the community, you know, making it viable economically to bring jobs and businesses to Canton that works with your master plan.
Right by our trailhead down there.
Right by the trailhead with a lot of walking, right adjacent to the current park. It's beautiful back there.
Very nice. Anybody on the board want to make a comment? Michael, go ahead.
I would just like to express my gratitude to, you know, Clerk Noble and the entire team over there to see a donation of a parcel of property with this much value, monetarily, but also I would say like this much ecological value and value that could be added to the community. It's right between the ITC Trail and the Lower Rouge Recreation Trail. It's 27 acres of forest and it's adjacent to a neighborhood. And I know our intention at the next agenda item is to potentially place a conservation easement over it to get land that is valued at, you know, over a million dollars, I think it was 1.6 million dollars, as essentially a donation and then to kind of ensure that it will remain in its current state in perpetuity is consistent with what I hear from the residents and it's also, it's just a good use for that land. And I'm grateful for it and grateful for, you know, all the projects that you have in Canton Township. And I'm excited to see the Redwood development over on Michigan Avenue as well, but thank you.
And again, thank you very much and look forward to working with the township in the future. Very excited and I'm sure the residents here in Canton will be excited as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Summer, we have some more for you.
No, I just want to express my gratitude like Clerk Seeger. This is incredible. One of the intentions of the board when we laid out our strategic plan was to protect as much green space in the community as we can. And I think this is a great step towards that goal. And I just, you know, really appreciate you giving this back to the community. And then we will be able to protect the wetlands and I know the conservation easement is coming up next, but protecting land in perpetuity is something that's always good and I'm always willing to support and so just thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back and forth.
Yeah, I want to thank you and your team also. This is incredible and what an opportunity for the township. And like Summer said, this is one of our goals to preserve and create more green space in the township and I'm very thankful. You know, green space is really important for, you know, our health and not just physical but mental as well. And this is just amazing and I'm really happy to be able to vote yes on this.
Thank you.
Sometimes I feel bad sounding redundant up here, but I think this is one of the more appropriate times to do so. Yeah, I'm also really appreciative. You're adding to one of the crown jewels in our community and I'm really excited to see what we will do with it in terms of keeping it up and improving it and making it usable, but also not just for us, but accessible for the animals that live in that part of our community as well. So thank you and I want to thank the clerk for keeping his eye on the ball on this one. I know he always has, is on the lookout for adding green space to our community and I am looking at the map and noticing there are some adjacent properties out there and maybe there's a pattern here that we can encourage others to do as well with their land. So thank you so much for bringing it forward.
I'm just going to say thank you and ditto to all of what my colleagues said. I really appreciate it and this is going to be a beautiful area for us, so thank you so much.
Thank you, and I also like to say when we spoke about this months back, as developers, a lot of times, like I said, we look at the bottom line, but this is, you know, what's best. I remember somebody on the board, and it could have been the supervisor, spoke about picturing having ice cream or being a nice sit-down restaurant and being able to walk and have walkability with the community and be able, that road's going to be paved all the way back, I believe, right to the entrance of the new park. So it'll be kind of like, we envision it being a destination place for whatever businesses, I'm sure a restaurant hopefully will come and/or, you know, small, like ice cream places, things like that.
Tanya?
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to thank Marketplace for donating this and I would like to echo what everybody said. I think that area is already being, you know, the Lower Rouge Trail is already being used for park run for the last one year and this really adds to, you know, we've talked about pressure and after COVID, a lot of things that have come up is how much green space you have in the community, where can people go and, you know, take some walks along trees and plants and in the suburbs, some green space is important and it really improves the public health of the community. So thank you so much for doing this and really hoping that, you know, the Michigan Avenue, the businesses can connect and do something over there, so.
Thank you very much.
No, and thank you, I ride my bike back there a lot and walk back there because I live down there and it's very exciting that we're going to not see more houses, but just keep the land how it is. It's going to be exciting, then we're going to have the buildings that you're going to do and the restaurants nearby, so I think that'll be an add to the Michigan Avenue walkability and connectivity there.
Yeah, I believe once the rooftops come and we do need affordable housing such as Redwood, it's going to bring, it's going to revitalize and bring a lot of growth, positive growth to the area, growth that Canton would like to see come to the area and take it off Ford Road and bring it over according to your master plan because I kind of did a deep dive into that in speaking with the clerk and the supervisor and the deputy supervisor. We've owned this for well over 17 years, so it's been a long journey and we're real pleased to be here today under the board's leadership.
Thank you, all in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, do you mind if we take a picture with you and show it that you... Yes, well, you might want to hear the next one.
Yeah, you want to hear the...
Okay, okay. So the next one is, let's see, G6. Consider resolution establishing Jeschwidokan Nature Area with Preservation Status under Section 53 of the Canton Code of Ordinances titled Open Space and Nature Area Preservation.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the following resolution naming Jeschwidokan Nature Area. Whereas the Charter Township of Canton is a desirable place to live, work and visit in large part due to the presence of open space land. Whereas Marketplace of America owns roughly 27 acres of undeveloped land, well, let's just say owned, roughly 27 acres of undeveloped land adjacent to the Lower Rouge Trail Zoned R2, which could potentially permit the building of up to 54 single-family homes. Whereas Marketplace of America has indicated it would like to donate the land to Canton for a public purpose and the Township Board of Trustees would like to preserve this forest and green space. Whereas development has affected the quality of life in Canton leading to fragmented open space and wildlife habitat, loss of productive farmland and forest land, destruction of rural beauty and the loss of wetlands. Whereas the Board of Trustees indicated it wanted to pay homage to inhabitants of the land prior to European settlement by naming open spaces and parks. Whereas before the French, British came in the 1600s, Michigan was home to several tribes. Michigan's three largest tribes are the Ojibwe, Ottawa and Potawatomi. Whoop, oh man.
Uh oh.
Whereas the Pokégon Band of Potawatomi Indians' Representation Outreach Board voted to recommend the name Jeschwidokan for the parcel designated to be honored, which means place of mushrooms. Whereas the Board of Trustees has established healthy environment as one of its strategic goals. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees, the Charter Township of Canton does hereby name the subject parcel adjacent to the Lower Rouge Trail, Lower Rouge River Trail, Jeschwidokan Nature Area and preserves the land under Section 50-3 of the Canton Code of Ordinances titled Open Space and Nature Area Preservation.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Representatives from Marketplace of America III LLC owns a 27-acre parcel of land adjacent to the Lower Rouge River Trail Zoned R2, which could potentially permit the building of up to 54 single-family homes, have indicated it would like to donate the land to Canton for a public purpose. This wooded land has deep forests and existing trails that support the township trail system and connect the Lower Rouge Trail to the ITC Trail. This property has been a morel mushroom hunting area for years for many longtime residents. If the Township Board agrees to preserve this property, the total acreage protected in the last year would be 171.69 acres. Clerk Seeger, do you want to add anything?
I'm just grateful to our partners over at the Pokégon Band for helping us again with the naming regime. I will not reiterate what was said at the last agenda item for Marketplace of America III, but again, extremely grateful. Grateful to Township Administration for helping us get to this point and look forward to establishing our next nature area, our second nature area in Canton Township.
That's right, preserving more land. And this actually, if you speak Polish, it's very similar, if you can do it. So Jeschwidokan.
Cool.
All right, anyone on the board want to make any comments? Summer?
I just want to acknowledge that it's really cool that we are teaching our residents about the indigenous history of this land and the people that did not surrender their land, the Ashenabe, and that we are, you know, honoring their history and their legacy.
Thank you. Diane?
Yeah, I'm really excited that we now have our second piece of preserved land. Really exciting. I also want to recognize the clerk for his leadership on this. I was very thankful today, it's a nice day.
Thank you, it is a good day. Anyone else? So the Pokégon Indians will be coming back. We haven't set a date yet, we will be having a ribbon cutting at the, like we did before. We'll be doing it probably near the end of the fall because they said they have a lot of events going on, so we hope you come to witness that and be a part of it, it's really cool, they do a really cool thing. So we look forward to the ceremony that's coming at the end of fall. All right, all in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, great. Thank you very much, thank you.
Now we're at G3, which was G1.
Oh, okay, okay, G3. Consider approval to purchase Open Gov Asset Management software.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the above-listed budget amendment to the 2024 Water and Sewer Budget and submit a purchase order to BertoSoft/OpenGov in the amount of $105,712.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The township's primary asset management system, City Works, has been in use by Public Works for over 17 years and no longer supports the business needs of the township. After an extensive evaluation process, township staff unanimously selected Open Gov as a preferred vendor for a new enterprise asset management system, EAMS, due to its support for underground assets. The software will be purchased through Omnia, Bero Software seller, a cooperative contract which eliminates the need for a formal RFP process. The Board of Trustees is now being asked to approve the purchase of the Open Gov Enterprise Asset Management software for $105,711.68, which includes implementation professional services for the Public Works Department. I just want to mention that there is a, it's in the capital outlay and computers and equipment budget expenditures. And let's see, Mr. Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor, no, I don't have anything to add other than I know that the Public Works Manager is here and is waiting for the software to get updated, thank you.
John, do you want to add anything? Okay, Victor, do you want to add anything?
No, but I'll take questions and I also like to say that...
No, but I'll take questions. And I also like to say that the Open Gov people are also online. Should we have any question for them?
Thank you. Okay. Any questions for the board? No. Well, Stephen?
Yeah, thank you. Actually, just for our ITI director. So this is not considered part of the ERP set of software. Does it sit alongside it, or is it actually considered part of that, or?
It's a good question that you ask. And I would like to, for me to answer it very well and keep things in context. If you remember a while back when I came before the board for a study, we put certain things in different brackets, right? And so we knew that the asset management system fell on the other side based on the current evaluation that we did at the time. But we actually did ask all the vendors who responded to the RFP for the ERP if they had a comprehensive asset management solution. And we did not see that in any of the solutions that were presented before us. So again, we had to go fully on the right side on those things that are on the outside of the existing ERP to make sure we provide an asset management system that would truly cover all township assets. Be that as it may now, we're starting with DPW, but our goal is to make sure that we have full asset management system throughout the entire township that covers all the department and not just DPW.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. Oh, sure, Joe.
If I could just add, this came out of discussions that we were having a few months ago about capital needs and capital planning. As Victor said, when we were kind of evaluating the ERP solutions, asset management was not something that came with one of those solutions. And so it was kind of put on the back burner for a few months. But once discussions about capital planning and, and capital asset management kind of came to the forefront a few months ago during a couple of study sessions with the board, you know, Victor, myself, and some others, you know, decided this was an area that we needed to kind of upgrade our performance in the township. And so Victor actually found the Open Gov solution to manage township capital assets. And this is kind of the first step in, in a process to get all township assets managed under one system, hopefully by next year.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? And of course, by having all those assets managed, when repairs are needed, we can kind of predict what's going to come up next. And that's, that's very important versus being reactive. We can be, we're being more proactive. And actually, that's more towards adding to our bond rating also. Okay. All right. All in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G three?
Oh, two. G four. Ma'am Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding requirement of the purchasing policy and approve the contract and purchase order for Rotundo Construction Corporation in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars for the replacement of patio concrete at the summit on the park.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Gingelly. Beginning in twenty-twenty-four, the Board of Trustees adopted a capital improvement plan which included project number two-two-oh-oh-three-three and two-two-oh-oh-three-four for the replacement of patio concrete at the summit on the park. The existing concrete has succumbed to natural cracking, shifting, and deterioration due to age and weather and has become a potential hazard to the safety summit on the park visitors. Mr. Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, ma'am supervisor. I have nothing further to add, but happy to answer any questions.
Questions? All in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Next item, G five. Consider awarding a contract and purchase order for HVAC replacement at the Bartlett Travis House.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the contract and, and, and purchase order for all city mechanical in the amount of twenty thousand, six hundred and sixty-two for the HVAC replacement Bartlett Travis House.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Beginning in twenty-twenty-four, the Board of Trustees adopted a capital improvement plan which included HVAC replacement Bartlett Travis House. The existing units are original to the building and currently not working to full capacity. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, ma'am supervisor. I don't have anything to add, other than they need some cooling in that building, the old building, so.
I know that with adding a lot of what we are also, we're putting in more efficient units, which saves carbon.
It is energy efficiency, yes.
Yeah, energy efficiency.
And we're not going to mess around with the preservation issue of it either, so.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Kate?
So I'm just being a little silly here, but it says...
Just gonna say the same thing.
It says that they're original to the building.
Eighteen thirty-eight.
So I'm thinking that they're original to when the township moved them to Preservation Park, perhaps?
Yes.
Fun fact. HVAC units.
Because I was thinking, wouldn't that be like coal or wood or something?
Oh, boy.
Saving a lot of carbon, right?
Yeah, yeah, or not, you're right, or not. The originals were the open windows.
For cooling, right?
Tanya?
I have a quick question. Is this the only bid that we received?
Um, I don't think so. See, I...
It says it did not receive any response, the invitation to bid.
Yeah, then I think it is, it is. Well, it's a unique construction because I do everything inside the facility, inside the attic of the building, so. Typical of older, older homes that don't have any ductwork for air conditioning or things like that.
Well, there's a couple bids.
All in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G six, right? Consider approval to expand fiber connectivity at township facilities.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve a five-year contract with Crown Castle Fiber LLC for the use of fiber network infrastructure and to approve the creation of a purchase order for two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for fiber connectivity build-out.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. ITI is seeking an approval to enter into a fiber line agreement with Crown Castle to provide quality data, voice, and security systems and connectivity to multiple township facilities. Since early twenty-twenty-two, Crown Castle has provided the township with cost-effective and reliable internet access at the admin building. ITI would like to expand the relationship to include point-to-point fiber network connectivity at five additional township buildings utilizing Crown Castle's existing fiber infrastructure. So we are going to be looking at Fire Station Number Four on Michigan Avenue and Arts Factory Campus on Cherry Hill Road, along with providing connectivity for data, voice, and security networks to these locations. Village Theater, Fire Station Two, and Canton Sports Center. They currently utilize private Ethernet services provided by Comcast, whose agreement will expire in twenty-twenty-five and is extremely expensive. So we are saving money and also providing better customer service. Director Abegu, do you want to add anything?
What I would like to say is that we are really preparing ourselves for the future by making this kind of move. I know that currently we have several things that sort of are leading us towards this. Number one, as is stated here, we have an existing contract that is going to elapse next year on the Comcast, and that contract is for one hundred meg of service to the stated locations. Whereas this agreement here is seeking to get us at least about one thousand meg. That's a high jump. And if you consider what we are paying for the one hundred, one hundred meg, it's almost, you can't even compare it. The prices are, you know, we, we are better off going this way price-wise. And over ten-year service, we should actually be making quite a lot of savings in terms of what we are hoping to do here. I don't want to bore you all with the other side conversation as it relates to the nature of broadband service in the township, but I want to also put a plug in for that, that in Canton Township as it is today, Canton Township still, still has a challenge of, you know, a true broadband service. And so for us as a township and the way we conduct our own business, if we're not at the place where we are supposed to be, then we will realize that we will begin to struggle. So again, this is in preparation for the service offering that will be at a higher level. But I'll take some more questions if you have them.
Seegerest?
I have a question about the structure of the RBA. We are not requesting a budget adjustment, at least not in the resolution. However, the Budget Implications and Account Numbers section does indicate that there needs to be a budget adjustment, and then it shows a series of budget adjustments there. Is this exempt under the purchasing policy, or should we also be doing a budget adjustment? I don't know if, if the Finance Director reviewed this or indicated that this was exempt from the purchasing policy, or what, did we just accidentally leave out that we needed a budget adjustment to pay for this? Does anyone know?
That's a good question. I would have posed to the Finance Department.
Yes, the Finance Director actually came up with this methodology of paying for this purchase. And my understanding is that some of the funds already exist in some of the capital planning. And so I think she's kind of, I don't want to say, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but I think that there are some adjustments she's making probably at, you know, looking at future costs to pay for the Comcast service that we currently pay for, and maybe adjusting those costs to, to pay for this, to pay for this new Crown Castle service. But it's, it's definitely a better question for Wendy.
But tonight, do you need a budget adjustment? Because it's, the, the RBA is indicating we may, that we need a budget adjustment. This is amending the budget, but that's, we haven't made that motion in the resolution.
So we'll have to adjust the resolution.
If the budget adjustment, if it is an adjustment for additional fund, from my understanding, no, because she's basically moving funds around to be able to accommodate this.
It says that a budget amendment is required.
Yeah, I mean, it says a budget amendment is required, and any expenditure over ten thousand dollars needs to be amended by the board.
Why don't we just do...
I'm just assuming that we didn't put the language in the resolution.
Right.
Wendy approved this, this RBA, right?
Yes.
As written?
That's correct.
But she must have just made a mistake on this one and, and not put in an amendment?
To the resolution?
To the resolution.
So if the board's comfortable...
Can you just do a second motion?
We could do a second motion. All right. And then I move, I move to approve the amendment, the amendment as presented. There's support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Any other questions? One thing they're also looking at is the peg fees also. We have that out to legal right now to determine if we can use, utilize peg fees for this. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
We have two motions on the floor, right?
Yes, we amended it.
Oh, yes, that was super inappropriate. I just made a main motion instead of a main motion. So instead, can we treat the second main motion as an amendment to the first main motion?
Sure.
Okay. So then we would vote on the amendment, then vote on the main motion? So we wanted to two votes?
Yes. All in favor of the first motion, say aye.
Second motion?
Aye.
All in favor of the second motion, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the first motion, say aye.
Aye.
All, okay. All opposed? All opposed to the first, all opposed to the second. Both motions pass. Okay, thank you. And I want to say Victor's been, you know, what happened on Friday with all of the networks going down, you know, Delta is still having a lot of issues. Victor and his team have been very vigilant that things like that haven't happened in the township. And while other communities did succumb to it, and they do not mention which ones because of, you know, what happened, the security, yes. But, you know, thank you, Victor, for you and your team, for your vigilance in our networks and cybersecurity and protecting the residents.
Thank you. Thank you all for staying vigilant, too. It takes a village to survive in these days.
It does. Thank you. The next one, item G seven.
Yep.
No, it's G seven, right?
You're right.
Yeah. Yay. Consideration Resolution Establishing Warren Wetlands Nature Area with Preservation Status Under Section Fifty-three of the Canton Code of Ordinances Titled Open Space and Nature Area Preservation.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the following resolution naming Warren Wetlands Nature Area, whereas the charter township of Canton is a desirable place to live, work, and visit in large part due to the presence of open space lands. Whereas development has affected the quality of life in Canton, leading to fragmented open space and wildlife habitat, loss of productive farmland and forest land, destruction of rural beauty, and the loss of wetlands. Whereas prior to United States settlement and agricultural practices, much of Canton was covered in marshes and natural flowing creeks that fled, that fed into the Rouge River, a remnant of its time under the pro-glacial Lake Whittlesey. Whereas these wetlands were emptied by the creation of agricultural drains in large part due to the U.S. Swamp Land Acts of eighteen forty-nine and eighteen fifty, which brought federal funding to encourage draining, drainage to make swamp areas in the Midwest more habitable. Whereas the natural water course of the creeks, streams, and rivers in Canton were altered while most pasture and forest were converted to farmland and eventually residential and commercial development, leading to decades of unregulated stormwater runoff. Whereas in modern times, the focus has been away from increased flow and capacity to watershed management, retention, and detention, and water quality improvements. Whereas a three-point four-two-five acre conservation easement with the Department of Natural Resources was placed on the subject tax parcel, and a wetland mitigation and reclamation project was started in nineteen ninety-two. Whereas stormwater runoff and flooding has been an increased problem for Canton in large part due to the antiquated drain system that was designed prior to current best practices, and Canton needs to highlight environmental initiatives designed to address these issues. And whereas the Board of Trustees has established healthy environment as one of its strategic goals, now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees, the Charter Township of Canton, does hereby name the subject parcel at Sheldon and Warren Roads, Warren Wetland Nature Area, and preserve the land in accordance with section five dash three of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. On May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, the Township Board created a local open space and nature area preservation designation in the Canton Code of Ordinances and preserved one hundred and thirty-four acres by establishing ZB West Nature Area. The board is being asked to consider preserving another property. In nineteen ninety-two, a three-point four-two-five acre Michigan Department of Natural Resources Conservation Easement was placed over a wetland mitigation area at the corner of Sheldon and Warren Road. Nineteen ninety-six, the Stewart Drain was reconfigured to allow for the detention of stormwater runoff on the property and reverse alteration of the Willow Creek and Stewart Drain to allow for agriculture and increased surface runoff. In nineteen ninety-seven, Singh Homes planted over thirteen thousand dollars of native plants to assist in the wetland reclamation project as a public benefit for another project. This project has been one of the most successful environmental initiatives in Canton history and has helped remove countless gallons of stormwater from the Willow Creek and Rouge River watershed by holding it on the property and creating habitat for wildlife. This designation would allow for the preservation of the remaining seven-point-two-eight-five acres not currently covered under the DNR Conservation Easement. If approved, Canton would increase its preserved open spaces by eight percent. Clerk Seeger, did you want to add anything other than what you said in the motion?
No, just this was a fun little project to do some history on. I had to reach out to individuals who no longer work at the township to kind of create that narrative. I think one of the challenges as we go through and create more nature area and continue to do these kind of wetland projects and, and nature preserve projects is, one, documenting that information a little bit better than we have in the past, and then, two, educating the residents about what's out there, why it's out there, and how long it's been there, like this area that was developed in the nineteen nineties. Most people didn't know how, when it was started.
Great. Thank you. Actually, I lived there when it was done. I lived at Plymouth Landing myself at the time. Yep. And I remember it going in. So there's, any other comments on the board?
I have a question.
Yes.
For Clerk Seeger. I know it says eight percent of Canton would have preserved open spaces. Do you know how many acres that is? Do you know how many acres that is?
Well, so ironically, this is an increase of 8% to the nature area. So this is 8% of ZBWS, and technically that's no longer accurate because this was going to be in advance of the other RBA, which would have established this. This was supposed to be the second nature area, now it's the third nature area. That's probably more like 7.25% of the increase into the nature areas. I'm unaware of how many acres there are in Canton. If anybody here is a mathematician, whatever, 36 square acres?
No, how many acres have we preserved?
Oh, in totality?
Yes.
That number is in the other RBA. If we approve this, then if we go to these Jesque Doken, our request for board action?
Oh, 171.
It is 177, almost 172 acres of nature preserves in a, in a one-year period.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Just a question. Turn myself off. About this action, does it change anything in terms of how this area is maintained and supported? I know, I know it's a natural area, of course, but does, does the township have responsibility? Or has it had responsibility for maintaining any of it? And will that change going forward?
The township has owned this property. So the township has always had a legal obligation to maintain it as a property. What we can and cannot do is regulate it on one-third of the property because of the DNR Conservation Easement. And we have to follow that, that's a legal document. We maintain it, we've done fragmities removal there. It is in desperate need of it, again. We have removed invasive buckthorn there. It is in need of that again. If you walk the property, it's very dense. There's a lot of, there's, there's white-tailed deer trails through there. It does need to be cleaned. I think one of the potential projects of the newly formed Canton Nature Society could be to do a citizen-led cleanup of that. And then currently, DPW is mowing around the, in the setback area that we have. The county has an easement because they have a drain that they maintain there as well. So this doesn't really obligate the township to do anything over and above what is currently done. It just will essentially create our local conservation easement over what is the remaining section of the wetland so that that is now covered. And, you know, now you have basically 10 acres covered instead of three acres. But no, no additional obligation financially to do anything. But again, now, like you have Canton Nature Society that likes to kind of preserve these areas, hopefully. That will result in citizens doing it.
Be interested in helping with that. But Director Norwood, per the citizen comments earlier, maybe we just need to meet with the community that abuts this and make sure we know where things are delineated and understand what we'll do. Okay.
I would agree. Trustees, I am.
And the US Army Corps of Engineers, part of their surveying study, will actually flag things like this also.
Correct.
So we will have a overall map of what we need to, what needs to be done. That includes this. Okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, up to item G. It is eight, stays eight. Consider approval of resolution approving settlement agreement in opioid litigation involving Kroger.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the resolution approving the settlement agreement and opioid litigation involving Kroger and authorize the township supervisor to sign any necessary documents in order to effectuate the settlement.
Motion made by Clerk Seager, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Board has been asked to adopt a resolution approving participation in the national settlement agreement in ongoing opioid litigation with manufacturers and distributors of opioids. The settlement agreement is with Walgreens for their role in the opioid epidemic. This one is with, going to be with Kroger, and we're being asked to join on with it. And so this is just asking for permission for me to sign the documents. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything to this?
No, just that the settlement agreement is with Kroger, not with Walgreens. This is a previous draft of the RBA, so the final draft, for whatever reason, didn't make it into the final folder. The settlement amount is up to $8 million per state. Canton is going to get like .0026, and then there's like a long number after that, and like a pi number after that. As a percentage of that $8 million, it's going to come out to about 20 grand if the settlement is, is up to $8 million against Kroger for their role in the opioid epidemic.
Questions or comments? Michael?
I would just like to say, as somebody who's active in the recovery community and who understands, or just like what's important, you know, the impact of opioids and addiction on our communities is a cause of great concern, and that is the reason why we have these settlements. And I would just hope and encourage the township and that when we receive these funds, that when we look for eligible expenditures, we try to ensure that the money from these individuals who are found liable or who settle due to liability around the opioid impact, that we put this to use combating the opioid epidemic. I know that's the intent of these settlements and these funds, but I would love to see people whose lives have been ruined recreated and reclaimed with this money as opposed to just the township reimbursing itself for expenditures. I just think that would be really important.
Part of our plan is to use it for some counseling that we work with right now.
Yeah, right now, the opioid settlement funds are allocated to support our embedded police clinician who works with people who are in addiction and mental health crises. And the services of Delia Gella, who also works with our police department on those issues.
Any questions on this? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Just, well, I guess we can do this at the end. It's kind of connected to this, but we'll do it, yeah, after G9. So G9, consider awarding a contract and a PO to AM Higley for the purchase of prefabricated steel and steel erection for the Public Works Storage Facility expansion.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to award a purchase order and contract to AM Higley for the purchase of a prefabricated steel building and the erection of that building.
Motion made by Clerk Seager, supported by Treasurer Slavens. As part of Canton Township's effort to effectively deliver and manage water and sewer services, the Public Works Division needs to expand their storage facilities for operations, inventory, and equipment maintenance. In collaboration with the managers within the Municipal Services Division, it was determined that a new building constructed within the Public Works yard is feasible. To advance the project, the Public Works Division is seeking approval that AM Higley be awarded a contract for the purchase of a 9,643-square-foot prefabricated building and the erection of this building in the amount of $512,240. The Public Works Division is asking for approval of this portion of the project at this time due to material procurement lead times and completing the project during this year's construction season. We will be returning to the Board in August seeking approval of all other trades once responsible contracting ordinance review is completed by purchasing an MSD staff. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Ma'am Supervisor. And I thank the Board for willing to take this item up tonight as an add-on item. We are, the reason, the main reason we bring it is there's quite a lead time on getting steel so we can get this construction done before the construction season ends and snow flies. So, thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions. Also, John Zalinas is here, who's been instrumental in pulling this project forward. Thank you.
I think John Zalinas is on also. Okay. Any questions from the board? Summer?
No question, just more of a comment, just in case. I know this is an add-on item, and it's 500 and $12,000. But it is, it was previously approved in the budget that the Board approved for 2024. So it is a budgeted item.
It is a budgeted item, correct. Others? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Before we go on to public comment, I just want to add one thing, kind of similar to what we read in item G8, but Wayne County had sent us a letter asking us where we would like to place one to five Narcan machines in our community. And I mean, Narcan's important. We know right now, I mean, as, as I lost a niece to an overdose, I mean, if Narcan would have been available, it could have saved her life. And so we want to make that available for our residents with Wayne County. So what we're looking at is, do we place it? And we were talking about maybe the police station and fire station, so it's available 24 hours. Now, that doesn't mean just the user would use it. A family member who was worried about one, another family member, a friend, could also utilize it, and it is free. And we sent a note to the library to ask them, the summit, one of the summit hallways, and I also sent a letter to the schools. I don't know if they're being offered differently with us. But I just wanted to ask the Board if you had any other suggestions or comments about where one might go before we submit our responses.
How many did we get, five?
Five, up to five, yes.
To think about it.
I, I think it's, it would be good to have it at Police and Fire because they're open 24 hours. I think also looking at alternate locations would be good because people that are struggling with addiction may not always want to go to the police department to pick up some, some Narcan. That might be a deterrent. The library is a great suggestion. The summit is a great suggestion. But I'm just wondering if there are any other places in the township that have longer hours that would be more accessible to people?
We do have to keep these, I believe, in public, in public buildings. Yeah. You cannot put it in. Yeah, like, yeah, gas stations or businesses or...
Is a, is a public building defined by, like, so could the township lease space at Meyer? And then therefore, it would now legally become a public building?
We could ask that question.
Very easily do that, if we wanted to.
Yeah.
But if we want to put it on public, you know, we don't want to go to that length, I understand that.
They have to be indoors.
And it would be good to have it spread, spread around the township too, maybe. Fire stations over on Warren.
Right, right. Spread it out.
This is just me, but have we tracked? Or do we know geographically where people tend to overdose? And if so, would we want these Narcan machines to be located as close to those locations as possible?
Yeah, I think yes.
I imagine we have that data somewhere?
Board, if you don't mind, I can speak to that point. We do have a map that defines exact locations where people have passed away of overdoses and have been revived during an overdose. Those typically, when you look at the mapping, a heat map of that situation, the ideal locations in my mind are along the Hagerty Corridor, and it would be a private-public partnership, which doesn't seem feasible with the county. The idea of someone offering space and calling it a, a public building might be the, a great solution to this. And that would, to me, would be a gas station near these areas that are most afflicted by overdoses. But it's a little bit of work. I don't even know if it's feasible based on the requirements of the county. So the quick answer would be what you all suggested tonight.
And if possible, 24-hour access. I don't know if that's possible.
Problematic.
Yes, but also our new youth center, which will be, Growth Works will be in. That might be an area also.
Oh, on Michigan Avenue down there.
Michigan Geddes. We'll ask them about the gas stations or the...
As we design that building, is there any thought to creating like a Sally Port or a vestibule where you could potentially have two doors, one that is open 24 hours a day, one that is closed and secured to gain entry to the building? You'd have to get through the second one. But that way, you could sort of keep, I see Dave Norwood laughing. This conversation you've already had.
Sorry, John Zalinas has texted me the same things as you're saying.
Ah. Boy, if I'm thinking of the same stuff John Zalinas is thinking of, it's called a good day for me. He's a smart guy.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, then I'll shut up. Sounds like we got smart people thinking about this.
Okay, so we can, I'll send those suggestions to them and find out what we're able to do with this program. I know that also Fan had offered us maybe a different kind of model that might be used outdoors, remember during the meeting?
There are a great number of partners who are supporting Canton Township with this issue, including Growth Works, Fan, Higera. Our own police clinician has engaged so many different folks outside. I think it's great to acknowledge the fact that, you know, it's a lot of the family members that'll be accessing these free Narcan, more than probably the user.
Lot of family, you're right.
God.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is...
Good discussion.
Yeah, it was a good discussion. We have some good things to send back to the county. Public comment. Do we have any public comment in the room? Any public comment going up?
George Miller, before we start, if you would be kind enough to put the stopwatch up on the screen to make sure I get my three minutes, I would appreciate that.
Okay, hang on just a second.
As you're ready, I'll start.
Just to let you know, though, it'll cover your picture.
Pardon me?
You won't be able to see your picture on screen. We'll only be able to see the...
Well, regardless, let's have time stopwatch up there so the three minutes can be verified. Or I can work off my phone.
No, I'll put it up.
Okay, good, thank you. Now, let's start.
Not yet, just a second.
I want to start, and I'll start for the three minutes. Okay. First of all, about the composting. If it's three and a half weeks, regardless who took over the contract, Parity or GFL, okay? They, you told us to call them. We call them, there's no response. Regardless, if it's GFL or Parity, somebody owes the township, or me, or the citizens of this township, because the DPW picked up on that. this township because the DPW picked up on that, and I pay trash pickup $150, more or less, on my tax bill. Services I didn't get, and the township, DPW could have been fixing a sewer. So, somebody needs to cough up some money. I'd like to see the contracts for both of those companies, when they started and when they finished. Okay, next. The art theater, it was 2.8 million, correct me if I'm wrong. I went over there and looked over at the handrail, at the crick. There's a couple of Christmas trees over there, plugging up the crick, and since we're environmentally conscious, green, I think you need to clean up the crick down there where somebody threw a bunch of old concrete pieces of it. It's all stacked up down there, and maybe that stops the flow, and you're 50 foot from the front door, the crick, so when it rains, it goes in there. 2.8 million you bought it for. Okay. $300,000 for generators. I worked for a company, in fact, Detroit Diesel at one time. They, they run those engines before they ship them to any trucking company for an hour to make sure the blocks and seals and everything's working. And they recommend maybe once a month, because it gets varnish on it and the diesel fuel freezes up, just like any other engine will, to start them. And those engines probably haven't been started even 5,000 hours over there in 20 years, and it means nothing. 5,000 hours on them, nothing, if it's that much. It's $300,000 cost because we think we need it, not because we can justify it, because we can think we need it. Let's go back to the Corps of Engineers. The county's supposed to clean the ditches, they have a fund for that and a program, so much percentage for ditch cleaning. In 40 years, or 45 years I've been out here, the ditches on Sheldon Road has never been cleaned, so Dingleday Family over here, which used to be politicians in this township, cleaned them. And I hope the Corps of Engineers can straighten it out, maybe. Wayne County on their problems. Back to the drainage on the wetlands, they swap off land, it has the dumps on it, to expand, for example, big company can come in, get it, then they say, we're going to give you, we want 10 acres to do our factory or whatever it is, we'll, we'll swap off another 50 acres over in Wayne County. Done. Factory goes up or they don't.
Thank you.
The local word, this means nothing.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Could I have that stopwatch up there? That is a marvelous idea. That should be, that should be...
We've done it before, we just won't be able to see you on screen just like...
That's beautiful. I'm, I'm not worth looking at anyways.
Just a second, just a second.
I think that's a bonus for everyone who don't see me. I, I want to cover my own face sometimes. But that just goes to show how innovation can come from the crowd. That is just, that should be permanently adopted. I'm going to ask for that every time. That's wonderful.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. You know, I come here tonight, again, concerned citizen, me and George, only people in the room, you know, try to help out with the trash, said, look, been here from the very beginning, look at, live in a community, live in another community that went through automated trash conversion, would like to, you know, say what I think, but, you know, again, go out in the, go out in the hall and talk to them, go out and do our job, you know, do, do our job, we're only getting paid to represent you. You know, we're, we're going on six, seven, we're going three hours here, guys. Would you pay me to listen to me talk for three hours and give you the opportunity to talk for six minutes? Three minutes before and three minutes after. Do you think I should waste my life to come here and talk to you? I love my community, that's why I'm here. Love this community, been here 44 years, have business here, own a bunch of property, pay a bunch of taxes, come and sit in the room and listen to you guys sit here and treat us like we're second-class citizens. But I did come here tonight to thank you, because I was here a couple of weeks ago and went to the music and sat out there and saw the supervisor, and I said, you know, I really enjoy the community. We had a nice band night, the police were present and doing a fabulous job as usual, everybody was safe, everybody was sound, everybody had a great time, but for what you guys do, all the positives that you do are wiped away with the disrespect of not letting somebody speak. I was in another community last week, the forum was totally different. Open forum before the meeting, open dialogue. Now, not going to get up there and take all the time, but something as important as the trash, you missed it on the trash. I'm not even going to tell you. It was settled out in the hall, but you missed it. It's going to be a catastrophic event on the trash, but you missed it, because you know why? You don't want to hear from anybody. You think we're ignorant, you think we're dumb, you think we're loud, you think we're stupid, you think we're below you. But innovation, just like George brought this timer up on that screen, I know exactly I got 31, 30 seconds, you don't have to see my face again. But just think about it, would you reverse the roles and listen to me and George talk for three hours for six minutes? Take that home tonight and let me know the answer.
Anyone else in the room? Anyone online? Okay, no one online. Public comment is over. Anything for the staff?
I have one issue, Madam Supervisor. Just want to bring to attention, 21 years ago today, at 4:15, Lou Stevens was killed, our first police officer, the only police officer ever killed in Canton Township by a drunk driver on Lots Road. So, if you would, and your thoughts today, keep in mind of his wife, Karen. They would have been approximately 73 years old right now.
Thank you. Victor?
I, I know we touched a little bit on it earlier on, but I can't say it enough. I, I know a lot of election is coming around, and there's quite a lot of targeted attacks towards election officials going on at this moment. So, I want to encourage everybody to, particularly anybody who's in public service and everybody who's actually here, hearing my voice, to pay close attention to what you do, especially online. There's quite a lot going on at the moment. You probably might think it's sounding like a broken record now, but I believe that the more we hear it, the more it registers in our consciousness to be a little bit more attentive to what we do. And so, it's really great if we pay attention to what we do online. And I, I want to correct something in the RBA process. It was on, on IT, we did look at it, and I didn't catch it, thank you, Michael, I didn't catch it for the amendments, all right? So, yeah, didn't catch that. That's all.
Thank you. Joe, is there Dave? Emma, do you have anything? John Sellme? Nope. Okay. We'll go on to board comments. Tanya?
I have nothing.
Summer?
Um, two things. The first, July is Disability Pride Month, and it is, it commemorates when the Americans with Disability Act was signed. And the second is Chief Chad, I heard you all did a great job helping with the officer that was killed, so I just want to say thank you for your work.
Thank you, yes. And actually, Chad, so we, I've been doing a great job, we have a new contract with the police, and we actually had a swearing-in today. We are increasing our numbers, we've improved the contract greatly from the previous ones, so we've been, you know, having people that want to come to Canton, so that's really exciting. Want to talk about that?
Very fortunate, thank you. Thank you for that, it's really increased. We're going to be another recruiting pitch, so if there's anyone watching or if anyone can help us push out again, there's going to be some retirements coming up, and we still have some open spots. The, you probably saw in The Observer, we had a nice article, how we acknowledge our military folks that come to us, and we'll need some more support, a little foreshadowing as we bring officers non-traditionally into the police department that may not have the background or the funding normally through our PSA program to get some of those folks through and educated and prepared to be police officers. So, there's multiple ways that we're trying to bring folks into the police department.
Thank you. Chief Stockline, you're on also, I don't know if you want to talk about, we had a swearing-in for the fire department also because of the new agreement, so you want to talk about that? Chief Chris?
I'm happy to do that. Yeah, we, we've actually, since our contract's been settled, we've got seven job offers out. We actually had eight, one, one failed background, so we're seven job offers out with, along with 12 interviews next week coming up. So, we're excited that we're starting to see these recruits come back into the township and very excited to get up to staffing. We've been hurting for a while here, so looking forward to that, and we appreciate the board's support.
Thank you, yeah. The board's, the board's support and the negotiators on both teams did a great job bringing our public safety back up. Thank you. Okay, we'll continue. Kate?
So, I just want to put it out there that no one thinks anyone in this room or anyone in the community is stupid, and it isn't, no, I don't think you're stupid. No. What we're trying to do is have our meeting, our business meeting, in a public space, and that's what it is. So, anyway, I don't think anyone here thinks that there's anybody stupid here.
That's right.
I also wanted to thank Chief Chad for mentioning Lou Stevens and anchoring us into what is really important, so...
Thank you. Steven?
Yeah, also, it reminded me of the officer that lost his life this week in Melvindale, is that what it's called? Yeah. And he was at the start of his career. He was going to have a long illustrious career, I'm sure, he seemed to be a dedicated young man, and I just wanted to send our thoughts to his family and fellow officers in the department out there and the community out there. It was a tragic loss of life, so...
Thank you, Diane?
Also, it's July, we... Sorry. We mailed our property taxes out July 1st, so you can come and pay your taxes, we're open Monday through Friday, pay them online. We are here, and with it being summer month, enjoy time with your family. The weather has been fantastic.
Clerk Seeger?
I would just let the community know that in four days, starting this Saturday, will be early voting for the August 6th primary. So, early voting starts this Saturday, and it will be conducted in two locations in Canton Township. The first will be at the Summit on the Park in the Arts Two Room, it's a fun little room, and it'll also be conducted at the Village Arts Factory, which is the building that was referenced earlier today in public comment that was purchased. And both of those locations will be available 8:30 to 4:30, and they will operate exactly like a precinct on Election Day. If you've never early voted yet, it's a pretty cool experience. All the convenience of voting before Election Day with the same level of emotional security of putting your own ballot into the tabulator. So, if you haven't done it and you want to check it out, come on out at the Summit on the Park or the Village Arts Factory, and we're going to do that every single day, starting Saturday and going until the Sunday before Election Day, and that's the fourth, that's Sunday the fourth. So, yeah, you know, that, that's happening, and that's exciting, and, yeah, and then I'll just also, you know, I, I'm appreciative of bringing up, and definitely thinking about the latest officer involved shooting the casualty in Melvindale, and I, I believe that makes three in the month of July alone, and there's only 23 days that have gone by in July. So, that's not, we still got a long way to go to the end of July, and three officers have been killed in the line of duty this month alone. And so, I would just challenge the community, if you see an officer, let them know that you're thinking about them, and keep that in mind when you're interacting with them. And then on top of that, I would also point out that there was an assassination attempt on a former president of the United States of America this month as well. And as we get closer to November, you know, motivations aside, as we get closer to November, people will, it'll get more and more difficult for otherwise normal human beings to behave themselves when interacting with other people. And so, I just would like to challenge the Canton community, and I know you will do this, but to appeal to your better angels and be mindful of how we talk to each other and that we hold space for people, especially those who disagree with us. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to give some good news. Our legal team has brought our number of legal cases down to two, which is great. I mean, when we came on board, thank you, Deputy Supervisor, and when we came on board, there were some long lingering lawsuits, when lawsuits hurt the residents, so entities and people that sue the township hurt the residents and cost the residents hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, our legal team has brought it down to two, thank you for doing that, you know, that, that helped save the residents some, some money, so from hurting like they had been for a long time. I also want to put something up, another good news item, our millages, so I'm going to put this, I mean, our road millage. So, this SEMCOG data was pulled by our engineering team, and I had sent this to the board, but I'd like to share this with everybody. You could see that back in 2018, the PESA rating of, if you look at Wayne County, Canton, and Livonia, under good, fair, and poor, Canton Township had about 7% of roads, major roads, as good, 57% under poor. Wayne County had 57% also as poor. In 2122, Canton Township roads, good increased to 20%, poor 38%. And then if you look at 2024, just pulling Canton Township, you can see we've increased the good roads to 30% and poor to 27% by the, the data coming from SEMCOG. Now, is the county's also gone up? We have also, but this just shows, you know, your, your millage at work and everything.
I would say we helped the county go up.
That's correct. We helped, we helped raise the county, that's very true, very true. So, thank you for everybody working on this, I really appreciated the team. I know that we prepare roadwork all the time and a lot more coming up, and of course, there's barrels out there, but it benefits us in the long run. So, any questions or comments from the board on this data? I know you had seen it, and it's all good news, and it's going to keep going up. Great, okay, thank you. All right, so can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
No move.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens and Trustee Foster, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.